Call to order the regularly scheduled meeting, they also go to City Council Tuesday, November 20th. If you could please rise, we're gonna have the invocation led by our city clerk and the pledge of allegiance will be led by council member Pimentel.
As we meet here tonight, we ask your assistance in conducting the affairs of this community. Please grant the leaders of our community the insight and courage to serve the citizens of El Segundo. Guide our elected officials in making decisions that affect our community, ensuring the continued growth and prosperity for El Segundo. Amen.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, somewhat short agenda this evening, no presentation, so Madam Clerk, we'll go, do we have a, oh, I'm sorry?
I believe you have a presentation that came in after the agenda went out from the police department.
Oh, great, okay. Chief Whalen, please.
Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to introduce you tonight to our newest police assistant, Dominique Alvarez, come on, step up here, and she is assigned to our records bureau, and I wanna knock on wood when I say this, we are fully staffed in records. So that's a, that's a pretty monumental achievement, I'm very happy that she was able to be that person for us, and she's hitting the ground running, doing great work. Dominique comes to us from Central California, Los Baños is where she went to high school, and she came down here to go to school at Merrimount, locally here on the peninsula. And while she was going to school, she interned as an administrative assistant or aide at the city of Vernon, and then we're lucky enough that she saw our ad and applied and beat out a lot of other people to get the job with us, and so we're excited to have her on board, and with that, it's Dominique, so.
Great, welcome Dominique, did you wanna say a few words, or?
Oh, I just wanna say thank you so much for the opportunity, I'm excited to be here, I've been here about five days and have already learned a lot, it's an amazing city and you're doing a really great job, thank you.
Welcome, thank you, should we do a picture, Chief? Yeah, let's do a picture.
Outstanding, okay, here we go, there's a couple of photos, and one, two, and one more, and one more, just for fun, alright, thank you so much.
Councilman, excuse me, Councilmember Nicol.
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bran, excuse me, Councilmember Bran.
I've been promoted.
I just promoted you.
I'm present anyway.
Sorry about that. Mayor Protem Persek.
Here.
And Mayor Boiles.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk, alright, public communications, now is the time and place for public communications, yes, please.
Yes, I'm Kathy Atkins, I live on East Cogburn, and just real quickly, I'd like to say, I was born and raised locally, and always wanted to live in El Segundo, and I've been here for a number of years. People who come here call us Mayberry, if you're familiar with Andy Griffith Show, and it's part of the reason I live here, because it's like the community I grew up in, part of that means that the people that do services for us are part of our family, and that goes to police, fire, and the trash, and the trash company that we have is wonderful, the people that pick up the garbage are the nicest people I have ever met, and I'm very disenchanted with the fact that you polled the community by giving us a letter and saying, if you don't wanna pay another twenty dollar, or twenty dollars a month for trash, mark no and mail it back, and failure to do that means a yes, that's not the way El Segundo should run things, this is not the way our republic does things, it feels very underhanded, and then the fact that you're gonna put out to bid for other trash people, I think we need to be polled on that, because everyone I have spoken with, and I speak to a lot of people, we all love the trash guys, and if there's a financial problem, I think you need to be open with the homeowners, for us, I mean, I pay almost eleven thousand a year in property taxes, I'm seventy-five, I'm retired teacher, I never made that much money, but I'm willing to pay it 'cause I love this community. I don't want someone to coerce me into something, I don't think it's, it's right, and it's not the El Segundo way, and I would very much like you guys to reevaluate and maybe think about sending out a letter saying, mark yes if you are willing to spend the extra twenty, twenty-five dollars a month, mark no if you are not, and maybe poll us, are you interested in us looking for different trash people? And I will tell you, my nephew lives in Hawthorne, where I was born and raised, their trash cans are this big, I cannot move that, I'm seventy-five, how am I going to move those kinda trash cans? I mean, our trash guys, I can put out my little ones and they take them, and it's, it's fine, they, I mean, they're just wonderful, and seriously, if El Segundo has financial problems, then you need to communicate that to us, so that we have a better understanding before we would vote yes or no, and even though I'm retired and very fixed income, if there was really a need, then I would say, you know, yes on the twenty, but no on changing the company. So, I don't know, are you gonna have to discuss, or can you tell me, yes, you'll table this and we talk about it and send a proper letter to let us vote correctly?
We, we'll close public communications, and then someone might wanna address this, Ms. Atkins, someone, I have a feeling like I might wanna say a few words, 'cause there, there has been communication going out about how dire the financial situation looks for the city three to four years out, so I think, once you're finished with public communications, one of us will address your comments.
And if there is things like that, a part of my, I taught high school math forty-four years, so I'm looking at numbers, that little junky house on the corner, the person who owned it died, it sold for one point four million, that's gotta be a lot of money to the city, I mean, the, you don't get much out of our, where does all this money go?
Well, once you're done with your comments, well, someone up here will do a little briefing, 'cause it's pretty complicated, actually, but yeah.
Yeah, okay, it, it should come to us, I mean, it's, for crying out loud, it's our land.
We agree with that part, yeah.
Okay, well, you can sick me on somebody if you want to, but I think that needs to be communicated, and again, I would be willing, I'm just gonna speak for me, to spend that extra money, but I don't want my trash people changed, I hope that makes sense.
It does.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other public communications? Okay, any council comments on the public communications?
We're gonna close public.
You have to close.
Yeah, sorry, I'll close public communications, thank you.
So I think we want, we, we'd like to address your questions, so the, one of the main reasons why we are even going out to RFP is that the trash company has, is going to double the cost of the current, of the current services, so we have to go out to RFP to find out if there is another viable source for us to, a way for us to collect trash that's not so expensive to the city, so that's what, the reason why we're even going, going out with the RFP is that they came back and said that the cost of picking the trash the current way is going to almost double, so that's what's triggered this whole chain of events.
Yeah, there are also many trends in the state of California from a regulatory standpoint, they're gonna require organics recycling and other recycling, all good things for the state, but with those compliance mandates come additional costs to the city, so we need to ensure that the vendors that we use can make those, meet those requirements. You're a math teacher, former numbers person, I mean, the numbers are pretty staggering for us, Ms. Atkins, this solid waste represents almost a million dollars for the city on a seventy-two million dollar general fund budget, we're one of only three cities in all of California that don't pass the cost, three cities out of all of California that don't pass the solid waste trash along, and when we look four years out, we've got some pretty dire financial conditions ahead of us, mostly because our pension costs, pension costs and liabilities are going to double from their current state, so that's a big driver, it's gonna go, if I remember the numbers correctly, Greg, from twelve million annually to twenty-four million dollar annually, that's just pension and liabilities, and that's on a seventy-two million dollars, so that's a third of our budget for that, let alone, we don't know what's happening with sales tax in the future as things continue to migrate online, so there, there are many things ahead of us financially that we're concerned about, and as fiduciaries, we're looking to just ensure that we make all the decisions up here that we can, that, to protect the interests of the city, so that's some more background, I don't know if there's anything else, Chris, or Scott, that I missed?
I think it's probably worth noting that that balloting process is mandated by a ballot proposition, so we don't, we, we can't mail out a, a yes, anytime you're going to go to a trash franchise service, you have to go through that process, and it is a negative declaration ballot, and we went to, we tried to print out as much information as we could on that statement, so that's why it had three paragraphs of explanation, and tried to get into the gory details a bit, 'cause it is an uncomfortable and counterintuitive way to make a decision, but it's one that, you know, twenty-five odd years ago, thirty-five odd years ago, the state of California, the citizens of California passed a proposition that, that said this is, it enshrines that in law, so, on that aspect, I would also say that, in terms of property tax and the classic, where does the money go, that's a valid question to ask for Autumn Burke, your Assemblywoman, and your State Senator Ben Allen, they would love to hear your opinion, they certainly hear ours, but of that one point four million dollar house, to give you a sense of where that money and what, how much that money stays here, on a one point four million dollar house, you're looking at just over eight hundred dollars of that annual property tax comes to the city, so eight hundred dollars on, on what's likely to be, you know, a fifteen thousand dollar a year property tax bill is not a significant amount.
Right. Yeah, and then also, just for clarification, on the RFP, we did ask for companies to submit bids for a manual pickup and an automation pickup, 'cause we would like to continue with the, the manual pickup, but we're just not sure what the bids will come back as far as how much it will cost us to continue with that.
And they have to be the lowest?
It's a good ques, I don't think so, no.
I'm not sure, no.
No.
So, we, we're just waiting on the results of the RFP to come back, and we can assess how much it's gonna cost, and which, if we could have to go to automation versus not automation.
I think we said we'd discuss this in February?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's coming back in February, so pay attention to the agendas if you'd like on the website, and probably first or second week, meeting in February, we'll have the RFP bids back, and then we'll have another discussion.
And then, how many, I, I don't know if you know, how many people in this?
How many, she's, oh, you wanna, Ms. Atkins, would you address the mic, 'cause this is video recorded, yeah, it's okay.
Lot of people watching at home.
Yeah, lots of people watching.
I'm sorry? A lot.
Thousands.
So how do we then get those trash cans out there, you know?
So, that was something else, that was the one comment I was gonna make, is my, I grew up in Hawthorne, my dad's still in Hawthorne, and they also have smaller versions of those rolling automated cans.
But you only get one, and so, if you get one, and it's the tiny one, that you can then get out to the curb, but now you, what do you do with the rest of the trash?
So, potentially, we could find ourselves in a three bin system, a recycling bin, a blue one, a black one, which is general waste, and a green one for green waste, 'cause that is.
Don't forget about organic recycling, that's happening too.
Yeah, organic recycling, so, it's, yeah, I mean, it, the world is changing, this isn't something that we are pushing on you, you have to do this, the state is mandating it of all of us, so, I mean, I, I think, I wouldn't, don't close your mind to it, we'll find, we'll find a way, because there are plenty of people just like you in the state that have to deal with this issue, and so we'll, we'll be there with you.
But right now, we do, I do separate trash, I have the, the recycle, the blue ones, and then the other, and if there were three, I think the current trash people would do that, I, I don't know why they wouldn't, they pick up two different kinds right now.
I'm sure they'll come back on the bill.
I would sure like to have an edge given to the current people, I think they've earned that from our community.
Especially our trash guy, he's pretty spectacular.
Just like a member of the family, I mean, absolutely good, I always give him Christmas gifts, I mean, how many people give a Christmas gift to their trash guy?
I do.
I do.
So, do what you can do to try to keep, and when is that decision gonna be made?
February.
February?
February, yes, ma'am.
Well, whatever you can do, thank you, so, we can be thankful, is Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Yes, indeed, much to be thankful for, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item A, consideration of a motion to read all, all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only, and I have a motion to approve that?
So I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Five-oh, okay, C, unfinished business, item one, consideration and possible action regarding approval of, one, a memorandum of understanding, MOU, labor agreement between the city of El Segundo and the El Segundo Police Officers Association, POA, two, adoption of resolution approving the MOU, and three, adoption, adoption of resolution approving and authorizing changes to the city's medical premium to CalPERS for each year of the MOU, fiscal impact, five hundred and seventy thousand for fiscal year twenty eighteen, nineteen, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty, and one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, Mr. Carpenter?
Mayor, members of council, David Serrano has started his third week with us as our human resources director, he'll be making this presentation and the next one.
Mayor and members of the city council, good evening, so I'm pleased to present to you a recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding with the El Segundo Police Officers Association, and we'll have a short presentation, walk through some of the highlights and key points for you this evening. So the city and the, and the Police Officers Association met over several meetings, approximately ten meetings, beginning in June and ending in November, so six month window, and we were able to get a memorandum and tentative agreement on multiple items, some of the guiding principles that, that drove the city was our idea to develop as a choice employer and workforce, obviously, we wanna reduce our vacancy rate in the police department, we're hovering at about twenty percent, so we wanna reduce that, we wanted the city to be an employer of choice, so we wanted to offer a competitive salary and benefits, we wanted to demonstrate increasing stability, so there are some elements for longevity and retention for, for current staff, and folks who come on board in future years and maintain a career with the city. We believe this is a balanced approach, and, and of course, we had open and honest conversations with our association members. Again, tentative agreement was reached on November thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Some of the highlights presented today are a three-year agreement going from October one, twenty eighteen, through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, and some, again, some of the highlights are salary adjustments, we're looking at nine percent effective November twenty-fourth of twenty eighteen, a two percent increase on October one, twenty nineteen, and two percent effective October first, twenty twenty, in the third year. The members have agreed to an additional three percent pers pickup, so they'll be picking up a total of twelve percent of the CalPERS costs, so sharing in that, in that liability with the city. We were able to offer a non-perceivable retention bonus paid in two installments, again, to fulfill that retention and longevity purpose at the city. And then we also have some health insurance premium allowance increases, so effective January one will increase from fourteen twenty-five to fifteen hundred dollars a month, and then a year later to fifteen seventy-five, and then ultimately, at the beginning of the third year of the agreement, sixteen hundred and fifty dollars per month. The members have agreed to eliminate a computer loan program, and they've agreed to cap their annual comp time off program. One of the additional elements is today, we also have an updated, I apologize, an updated longevity chart that was handed out late this evening, so we wanted to also highlight that portion for you in today's presentation. With that, I'd like to close the presentation and recommend the city council to adopt and approve the MOU, adopt the resolution approving the MOU, adopt a CalPERS resolution approving the medical premium updates throughout the course of the MOU as well, and we're available to answer any questions that you may have.
I got a question for Greg, Greg, I don't think you're prepared for this, but you're good at doing math on the fly, how many hours would you guess that the city council man-hours, or people-hours, the city council, the staff, and our negotiator have spent on these several meetings that David referred to earlier?
Hundred, hundred and fifty?
So we spent a lot of time on this, and we took this decision very seriously, I think, you know, the sign of a good compromise is that both, both parties leave unhappy, and that's frankly, I think, how both sides are right now, we're a little bit each unhappy, and we are moving forward, though, and I think at first, you get a little bit of sticker shock, I even saw a couple eyebrows, frankly, when I, at the nine percent, and you have to take that in a context to know that we did ask for a three percent employee share of pension costs, and so they're paying three percent more than they were before, also, what wasn't mentioned in here is very briefly touched on, I wish almost we had a slide that showed where our employees were relative to their peer groups, because I think that would be good for the public to see, so we heard loud and clear from Chief Whalen that he needs help in recruiting and retention, and so, one of the biggest decision factors for all of us up here at the, at the dais is, how are the, how are peer groups paying their police officers, and we were, we were well under, so, again, I think both sides left slightly unhappy, and the good news is we have three years of certainty, this, the police officers will be at parity with their peer groups, we are getting that three percent more to the employee share of pension costs, I think everything that Don Brand started that I assisted with on the pension front has gone a long way in terms of educating all the different groups in terms of the challenges that we have ahead of us, so those are my thoughts on it, anyone else?
Mayor, I just clarified a couple things, the, the three percent pers pickup is on total comp while the base salary increases are on the salary, so the three percent actually ends up being closer to four, four and a half percent of, of their comp, and when I said a hundred and fifty hours, that's a hundred and fifty hours of meetings with sometimes ten of us in a meeting, or five of us in a meeting, so the combined hours is, you know, probably closer to seven or fifty.
Okay, okay, that's, that sounds more like, I did say people hours, not meeting hours, but that's okay, alright, anyone else, Don, yeah?
Yeah, this, so, gives me something to celebrate and be thankful for this week at Thanksgiving, I'm really happy to see that we got to this point after lengthy negotiations, and I shared the goal of Chief Whalen, let's fill these unfilled police spots, we've been hearing about that from people in town for a long, long time, we've got quite a package now, we've got a competitive contract here, we've got the biggest lateral bonus in the land, and we've got a, a search firm trying to recruit new officers, so we put together the whole package here, and I'm really hopeful that we'll make it work, and we won't have so many funded but unfilled police officer spots, because the number one thing people here in town want is safety, and to see their police cars coming through their neighborhoods, and so we've got the whole package here, I'm really delighted about it, and thank the POA for their cooperation and seriousness around the negotiations, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Brand, anyone else?
I'll wait until after the next item.
Okay, alright, so, I would like to move approval of item one, as stated.
Still moved.
And, I'm sorry, just with the additional table and longevity.
Correct.
Do I need to insert any language there, are we good with that?
Nope, as long as it's clear that it's with the updated table.
Thank you, Carol, do you still?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, five-oh, great. Item two, consideration and possible action regarding approval of, one, a memorandum of understanding, MOU, labor agreement between the city of El Segundo and the El Segundo Firefighters Association, two, adoption of resolution approving the memorandum of understanding, and three, adoption of resolution approving and authorizing changes to the city's medical premium to CalPERS for each year of the MOU, fiscal impact, five hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five ninety-five for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty, and one million, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and David, are you gonna take this one as well? Great, thank you.
So, the next item this evening is-
So, the next item this evening is the firefighters' memorandum of understanding. Again, the city and the association negotiated over multiple meetings, again, about nine or ten meetings with this group. Again, the guiding principles was to develop as a choice employer and workforce; improve our salary and benefits from a range of six percent to twelve percent below median. So, our firefighters were in a different sort of process here. Develop the city as an employer of choice, again, offering competitive salary and benefits; demonstrating increasing stability, offering longevity and retention; maintain a stable, trained, well-developed workforce. Again, fairness, the employees agreed to an additional three percent pickup, which we'll see in a moment. And again, with the balanced approach, open and honest conversations. The association did agree to language regarding economic emergency. In the event that the city council determined that there was an economic emergency, we would have a re-opener, and we would be able to look at those salary and benefits at that time. We reached tentative agreement on all these items on November thirteenth of twenty eighteen. Again, some of the highlights, a three-year agreement, so we do have stability for some time. The salary adjustments, nine percent effective November twenty-fourth; two point five percent effective October first of twenty nineteen, second year of the MOU; and two point five percent effective October first, twenty twenty, in the third year. Again, the firefighters' association agreed to an additional three percent pickup. They'll be paying a total of twelve percent of the perceval rate. They've agreed to non-perceval education incentive for their tier-two members, which is a great, a great way to offer retention, have benefits to employees, and not have additional pers liability to the agency. Again, we offer an increase in insurance health premiums, again, from fourteen twenty-five a month to fifteen dollars, I'm sorry, fifteen hundred dollars a month effective January first, and then, we increased that by seventy-five dollars in the second year, effective one one, twenty twenty. And then, we move up to sixteen hundred and fifty dollars effective January first of twenty twenty-one, the third year of the program. Again, the employees have agreed to elimination of the computer loan program, and they have agreed to a cap rate on their comp time off, limited to one hundred and forty-four hours. With that, I'd like to recommend the city council to, again, adopt the firefighters' association MOU; adopt the resolution approving the MOU, and adopt the Calpers' resolution approving the medical premium increases over the three years of the MOU. And with that, we'll close the presentation and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Nickel, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I'm very pleased with both of these negotiations. I don't want to say that one negotiation went better than the other, but I was really, really happy to get the firefighters back to where they needed to be. It was very bothersome to me to see a firefighter get hired, get trained, and then, you know, shoot us the peace sign and move on. And it's, you would like to think that El Segundo is where people want to be. And I think the five of us are moving the needle to a place where this is where people want to be, and that is one of our guiding principles. And so, I'm pleased that, I'm also very pleased that we're not gonna have to have this conversation for another three years. Shows a little stability for retention.
Right. And I just, I wanted to add one thing. You know, we, we as a council really looked out of the box on how we negotiated this. We tried to develop ways to offer compensation that wasn't gonna have lasting, long impacts on the pers. So, credit to this council, you know, to our city leadership and the firefighters and the police association. We really kind of tried, really took a hard look at how the compensation should be paid out and tried to come up with ways and creative ways to do it so that we were all successful in our goals of keeping, you know, paying a fair wage as well as keeping future costs down. So, congratulations to everybody for doing that.
Great point. Thank you, Mayor Protime. Chris, do you want to say a few words?
In a similar vein, I think the transparency with which we dealt with both labor groups on what our real concerns are for the long-term pension obligations and the constructiveness which we received on both their parts with the pers pickup in particular on total compensation, which is a significant move; the ability to make some of these compensations non-perceval and to remove some of the specious sort of benefits that have just been legacy items that I think were sort of just, just window dressing, but were factoring into those pers calculations that we're able to remove. So, in that regard, I think the transparency of our concerns and the forthrightness which they were willing to address those concerns. Again, no one is gonna walk away from these waving their hands with joy if it's a good negotiation, because I think that's sort of the measure of it. But I'm, much like Councilman Nickel, I'm elated that we move forward with three years with a degree of certainty. And that's something that when we were out on the street pitching something or telling police and firefighters or prospective police and firefighters about what an opportunity they have here, they can see that clarity and know what's in their future and know that they have a partnership amongst council and its labor groups about how they're gonna move forward in the future.
Thank you, Councilman Pimentel. Don? Yeah?
So, one of the things I'd like to celebrate and give a shout-out to is the city's negotiator, Ermomoyse Rodriguez. And what a great job she, she did in adopting a collaborative style in working with the associations. And what a refreshing change from what we had when I came back here in two thousand and sixteen. It's a lot easier to craft a deal when you're working with someone who's experienced and knowledgeable and fair. We have this group of cities that we compare ourselves to, and hopefully, this settlement will put us in a more competitive position. But I'll remind everyone that things don't stand still. These other cities will be making moves in the months and years to come, and I think we need to pay attention to the comparisons between El Segundo Fire and, and our comparison cities and realize that while this is set up here for three years, these other cities are gonna be enhancing their compensation packages. And so, we should pay attention to how that's going over time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brand. One thing I want to end with, Greg, is just the one thing to Carol's point about lasting change. You know, we only had a couple bites of the apple in that regard, things that really will outlast this council. And one that I would like to ensure is addressed, the re-opener, which is binding arbitration and agreement from all parties. And when you look at grievances that come up in the future potentially, that is one of the few items that we as a council can enact that will change the way in which we address those issues in the future, potentially saving the city lots of money. So, I would ask that when we do this re-opener with the municipal labor code that both groups agreed to, that we also address that again with the groups, and hope we can have that conversation candidly as we have with the others. Great. Thank you. All right. So, um...
I'll move to approve item two.
Scott's gonna move. Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Carol, Mayor Protime, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Five oh. Great. All right, consent agenda. Do we have any? Do we have any polls? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda by number only?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Five oh. Great. Okay, we're moving on to city clerk. Report, city clerk.
What?
Uh, I don't, well, do we, let's, can we do comments from everybody else afterwards? Yeah, let's do that. This is like actually a decision we have to make, I think, believe. So, number seven, consideration and possible action regarding the city's conflict of interest code required by the Political Reform Act, Government Code eighty-one thousand, ET's, ET SEQ? Must be, I don't know what that stands for, but fiscal impact none. Is that et cetera? What does that even mean? ET SEQ? Some legal jargon? David, what does that mean? ET SEQ?
Oh, et sec. Um, it means and following.
And following, thank you.
It's illegal, yeah. Latin.
Chris knows Latin, too.
I know.
Do you need, you want a drum roll?
No.
Okay.
All right. So, every two years, the city is required to file a conflict of interest update to the FPPC. So, this year, we want to get some feedback from the council related specifically to that they agree to the groups that we are currently asking to file a Form 700 and what they want to move forward with, with a few new groups that have more recently either not filed Form 700 or they think they don't need to anymore. So, for us specifically, we are having arts and culture. They are currently completing the Form 700. It looks like what they're moving into is, and the decisions they're making are sometimes financial, so we'd like to continue with that. They're currently doing it. We don't believe that the Aviation Safety Noise Abatement Committee or the Disaster Council really needs to or is required to fill out the Form 700 based on what they currently do or the decisions they currently make. We look to the council's direction as far as what they envision the EDAC committee doing in the future. But based on what they've currently done, we feel they probably should be filling out the Form 700. And then, with the Technology Committee, we're still waiting for them really to provide, to make a decision on what direction they want to move into as far as vendor involvement. And I think they're still honestly, as a committee, still looking at that. As far as staffing, we usually deal with human resources, and we'll do that before we bring it back to council at the next meeting for adoption.
Okay, so tonight, you'd like to discuss particularly, it sounds like, the Technology Committee, EDAC, maybe Arts and Culture as well? And maybe, David, could you?
Sure. And if you have any input that you want to provide to us to look into further or change, it might be you want to think about some committees, commissions, and boards further, or you might want us to look into processes further or how we determine that a committee, commission, board is required to fill out a Form 700. But what we'd like to do is come up with what we need to adopt immediately for next, the fourth, because we don't want to wait any longer to submit it to the FPPC before the end of the year. And then, we always can come back to council mid-year or a few, you know, in January, February, March with changes if you want us to do further investigation or looking into the Form 700 process.
So, right now, it is just the Arts and Culture Committee? No. Who else?
No. All the committees that currently file a Form 700 are, is the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, the Environmental Committee, Parks and Recreation, the Investment Advisory Committee, the Library Board of Trust Trees, U.S.D. Recreation and Parks, and the Senior Housing Board. And then, obviously, we have the FPPC filers, which is the city council, the city attorney, the city manager, and the Planning Commission, and the city treasurer. And then, we have, for example, the city clerk needs to file this, but it doesn't need to be turned into the FPPC. But the ones I just mentioned are FPPC filers.
Got it. Thank you. David, what are your thoughts on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, really, this is a point in time when the council can decide how active they want these committees to be in certain decisions that are being made, particularly financial decisions. In our mind, the, what triggers the Form 700 requirement is involvement and selection of vendors, making recommendation on vendors; involvement in budgetary issues, making recommendations to the city council on budgetary issues. And, and really, any recommendations involving money, public, public money. And that's really, in our mind, what triggers the Form 700 requirement. Historically, as I mentioned in the staff report, the city's been very conservative when it comes to CCBs. And historically, almost all CCBs have been included on the list. If the council were to say that certain committees, such as, say, EDAC, you know, wasn't gonna be, they weren't gonna be looking for them to be making a lot of formal recommendations, not involved in vendor selection or budgetary issues, then they probably wouldn't have to fill out the Form 700. Conversely, if the council really wanted to rely on them on an annual basis to weigh in on the budget, be involved in vendor selection, just be available to make recommendations on those issues, then we would recommend that they fill out the Form 700.
Can I ask the lawyer, a lawyer question?
Absolutely.
What is the difference between a recommendation and advice?
Um, I'm sorry. Can you clarify on from?
From a CCB.
No, it's really, yeah, it's pretty much synonymous.
But if we're just asking them their opinion on something, they're not formally making a recommendation. They're not making a motion, a second, and a vote.
Well, if they're a body acting as a body, then we would recommend that they do something formally. Otherwise, you won't know what the body is saying. You have to have a vote in order to represent what the body is advising. But if you're, you're talking about individual members, of course, individual members can provide advice informally.
But we have joint EDAC council meetings, correct? So, if they had an item on their agenda that they brought up for discussion, and they just discussed it, and we were present during that discussion, would that be a formal recommendation? Would that be something that would trigger a Form 700?
Well, there's, there's a couple parts to that question, so let me sort of parse it out a little bit. If EDAC, if the council was looking for EDAC to make a, for EDAC to speak on an issue, I think it would make sense that there's some sort of consensus or some sort of motion, something formal, right? So that you know that EDAC has spoken, right? Otherwise, it's just individual members, and do the individual members represent EDAC as a whole? So, there's that. And then, remember that the Form 700 is only really dealing with financial issues, budgetary issues, vendor selection. And so, if EDAC is weighing in on things that don't involve money, don't involve vendors, then it really doesn't trigger the Form 700. It's really only the expenditure of public funds that we're concerned about.
And they, but they have weighed in on those decisions in the past.
That's correct.
And may indirectly influence some decisions. What's the downside of the 700 outside of people not wanting to disclose?
From our office's perspective, there's really no downside. It just further protects the city. I think it furthers transparency. People know who is involved in these decisions, who the council's looking to. And also, knowing that the committees have filled it out allows the council to engage the committee, whereas if they haven't filled out the Form 700, maybe the council would say, well, we'd really like to get their opinion, but they haven't filled it out. So, maybe we, you know, don't want to ask them the question.
Well, I guess that's where I'm looking to you as our attorney to say, we really want to be able to utilize the bandwidth that are in those rooms. But I'm fearful that if we smack the Form 700 on them, that we're gonna lose some of the bandwidth in those rooms. And so, that's where I would look to you as, to, and say, you know, how can we get the information we want from that room and utilize the talent and the minds in that, in that room without requiring them to file a Form 700? Is there a way? Is there a workaround? Is there, like I described, a discussion item, and we're present for the discussion? Because just like, as you know, even from the Planning Commission level, Planning Commission can make a recommendation. They can vote on, they can approve something. They send it up to council, and council does not have to follow that recommendation or that approval. And so, I'm, I'm just trying to, and, 'cause I, I'm on good authority to understand that there are members of EDAC that are not comfortable with Form 700, will likely resign if the Form 700 is forced upon them. And so, us as a city, we're stronger with them, so how can we find a way to keep them there and still get what we want?
The counterargument, Scott, is, you know, having shared that group, is that they want to participate in a very meaningful way in things like urban planning in our city. And many of them are developers, are real estate brokers, so there is an inherent conflict of interest if they want to participate in those decisions. And while I certainly wasn't an advocate for Form 700, I do think some people will leave as a result. I do believe it's in the city's best interest from a transparency and knowing what, where people's interests lie, because that group has become very influential, and I think we go down a... And I think we go down a slippery slope potentially if we're going to make exceptions for certain groups. And they still, like, if they're just going to be absolutely advisor with no financial impact, no budgetary, no planning, but they've been, I mean, they were helpful with Measure TOT, let's be honest, they were, they've been considering housing issues. Vendors several times, so they've been making financial, well, they, certainly maybe they haven't been making the decisions, but they've been guiding our financial decisions for quite some time, even back when I was on, and we might have a couple fall out. But I do think that my personal opinion at this point is that it's the right thing to do. And with the tech committee, it may give those tech committee members that have been frustrated by the process a little bit more ability to actually weigh in, right? Which presents another set of problems potentially, but-
Yeah, I guess the other side of that, though, with EDAC in particular, is like, EDAC has a work plan. That work plan was not created by council and sent to them, it wasn't created by council and staff, and then brought to EDAC. EDAC created that on their own. Said, hey, we should work on this, because they weren't being fed things to work on, per se. You were there, you know how that is. So whereas these other committees, commissions, and boards, a lot of times, they're being brought the information, hey, we need you to vote on this, we need you to weigh in on this. Whereas EDAC is like a think tank. So without direction, they're going to create their own direction, or hey, we want to work on this, we want to do this. And so I think this is a opportunity for us to look at it and say, okay, well, what do we, what do we, the council of Elskondo, want out of our economic and development council? What do we want of them? What role do we want them to play? You know, because do we really want them playing a role of trying to, you know, move us towards studying housing east of PCH and things like that? I mean, that is not their job. They're not, I mean, many of those people do not even live in this town.
I would disagree, I think their job in having written those bylaws, their, their charter is to understand what the economic drivers are of this city, and one major one is housing. And if you don't have enough housing supply, don't have enough employees, you don't have a workforce, you don't have employers. So I think that everything they're, they're doing affects the way we do business, and spills over to the way we serve our residents as well, I mean, it's a, I, I just think we've been, you know, tap dancing around this issue for too long, I really do. I feel like it's making us vulnerable as a city potentially. And I would rather us tighten it up, and if we lose a couple members, that would be, that would be unfortunate. But I'd rather protect the interests of the city at large.
Mr. Mayor, just to add, I did speak with Chair Al Kiyagi today, and he did sort of echo some of the same comments, that he does have some concerns. You know, it's interesting, speaking with Al, is that, you know, he doesn't really seem to think that EDAC has been acting so formally, or really making that many recommendations to the city council. But I told Al, the same thing I'll tell you, is that really, the advisory bodies serve at the pleasure of the city council. So it's up to the council to decide what role that advisory body will play, and how you want to use them for the next two years. And so I told Al, you know, really, it's really the council's decision. And if they want them to be actively involved, then our office would say that there are implications to that decision, which is that you have to fill out a Form 700, which is what the city's done for, you know, for most committee, commissions, and boards. And then as far as technology committee, just so you know, they did have a scheduled meeting last night. They didn't, weren't able to reach a quorum, so Mark was at the meeting, and there was just a discussion, nothing formal. But they're going to bring it back at their next meeting, but there's a possibility they may just keep what they, the current status quo, and not seek to be involved in vendor selection, and possibly keep their bylaws as is. But again, it's really, you know, advisory bodies serve at the pleasure of the city council. So that's why we bring this to you now, so that you can give directions to the city clerk's office, so we can bring a resolution at the next meeting as to, you know, which committee, commissions, and boards you want to include on this list.
So we don't have to make, I, I thought I heard from the clerk's office, they would prefer that we make a decision tonight on the list, so they can get ahead of the FPPC filing.
So in, in talking with Tracy, and in talking with the attorney's office earlier, what we would like to do, if you want to speak to, or in your next joint meeting with EDAC, or determine what roles you want certain committees, commissions, and boards to play that aren't currently filling out the form, we always could adopt the resolution without them currently, with a date to come back to council to amend it based on a final decision on the role we want EDAC to play. Because my understanding is-
And tech committee, right?
I think David's going to disagree with-
Let's just be, let's just be really clear, there's no resolution in front of the city council tonight.
No.
So the idea was just to give direction to staff to bring back a resolution, possibly at the next meeting. But if there's certain committee, commissions, and boards that you want to hold off on making a decision, then-
I think, I think Mona's got a great point, and Scott, like, we should at least have a dialogue with those groups before we come forth with the resolution. And why don't we have a resolution by the next city council to address all these other CCBs, and then have that conversation with those two groups, and then subsequent, come back for those two other groups? That would meet your needs, right? Okay. Chris, or Don, or Carol, did you want anything?
My only cop thought was, you know, if, if someone elects not to stay on a, a committee or commission because of the Form 700, those committees and commissions are open to the public, and they can still participate as far as being there, they just won't have a voice, a vote. So it's not that they can't still lend their skill sets, they just will not have a vote to, on the committee. So I think as from the city's perspective, like you said, we have to really kind of make sure that we've buttoned everything up, and that we're protecting ourselves. But we're not stopping people from participating as a, you know, as a, as a resident of, of the city, so.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Don, or, yeah?
Yeah, I think it's the council's call, not the, the various committees to make that decision. I agree with what you had to say, Mayor, I, I think that's the safest and right direction, and I look forward to taking that action when we get a chance.
Thank you, Don.
And just, just lastly, to Don's point, you know, we did talk, do talk about being transparent. And I just think if that's something, one more layer that we can ensure that we are transparent to our, to our residents, that's something we should be doing.
Thank you, Mayor Potem.
I think it's worth it, making sure that if we are going to approach these two boards in particular, and engage their sentiment, that, you know, some of them may not know what a Form 700 entails. And I think, you know, for us, it becomes somewhat blasé, because we've all done them. But it is an incredibly invasive document, right? And I think that they should have a realistic picture of how much of their life is laid bare on that. And by its very invasiveness, a lot of those people are more eminently qualified to be council people or elected officials than, than, than maybe some of us, certainly maybe more, more so than me. But the fact that they don't want to go through that public process is, is the reason that they are on those boards and not running for office. So I think that we should be very, you know, the idea that, well, if they don't want to fill this out, then they don't want to really be on the board, sort of message is not necessarily what we want. I tend to, and I don't want to derail our further conversation. I will say that my personal druthers is, with the tech committee, we ask for concrete things from. And it is somewhat, I think, miscast if we are not allowing them to make concrete decisions. Having 12 guys sit in a room and tell me we should use blockchain doesn't do me any good, right? Tell me what kind of widgets and, and what sort of things to put in, so I think there's a real logic to having them go through the process. And if it windows them down, because that may be what we want out of that body. Whereas an advisory body that's saying, well, here's the pluses and minuses of having housing in different places, the pluses and minuses of having seven roller rinks, or, or four golf courses, or whatever, that's something by fine tuning maybe a bit of the rules of the road that we want from them, about advice, prioritization, points of emphasis, developments, pros and cons, those sorts of things, without specific land use and budgetary items attached to it. That might be a good way to harness those, I think there's a lot of brain power there we would hate to see walk away, because we're demanding them put down exactly how many mutual funds they own in Omaha.
Thank you, Councilman Pimentel. And just for the public, the Form 700 asks you to list all your assets and liabilities in dollar ranges, any long-term loans, any liabilities. I did, like, like Chris said, it's very invasive, for good reason, I mean, making decisions for the public's benefit, so. Okay, so it sounds like the direction is, Tracy, that, bless you. Yeah, we'll go forward with the, with the exception of the two, technology committee and EDAC, and then we'll come back to council and revisit those at a later date, with, with some discussion with those groups. All right, good discussion, thank you all. Let's go to item eight, consideration and possible action. Do we need to vote on that, or is that enough? Thank you. Consideration and possible action regarding adoption of an ordinance to take effect immediately consolidating future standalone municipal elections in the city with statewide march, even year elections effective 2020 to comply with California voter participation rights, California State Senate Bill 415, fiscal impact NA. Madam Clerk?
Well, you've seen this a few times, it's back again. And as I alluded to earlier, it's because our sole vendor that runs elections is no longer in business. And it would be cost prohibitive and labor intensive for our office to do a standalone election. We agreed to do it in 2022, but now we're requesting that we do it in 2020 instead. We have March on here, and the reason for that is because the previous vote was to move it to March 2022. You do have the option of going to November 2020 as well. We just left it in March, just because that was the previous vote, so. But it's open for discussion, see, up, purely up to you whether you want to do it in March 2020, or November 2020. We recommend, though, that we do move it up to that year, being that, I think Manhattan Beach went out to find a vendor, and several vendors backed out because we weren't, the cities weren't big enough, and Manhattan is larger than us. They're out of state, and they also don't provide 100% what Martin and Chapman did, so we would still be at a, pretty, it would be costly, and also labor intensive as well, just because they don't offer the amenities that Martin and Chapman did. So Manhattan Beach ended up going, they're actually having the County of LA run their election in March.
Oh, 2020?
Uh, no, this year, 2019, because Martin and Chapman closed their doors, even, and they had planned to have them run their election.
Got it, thank you. And when, when is LA County going to be adopting, like, the multi-day voting, electronic voting? How long out is that? How far out?
Oh, 2020, sorry.
Yeah, oh, good. So that's one of the benefits, is we potentially could get much better voter turnout, right, by aligning with, right? You're talking about multiple days, and making it so much easier to get out and vote? Okay, yeah, so hopefully we'll get more voters, okay. So I don't know how you guys feel, I thought of ending the month early, sounds pretty good.
I like it.
You would, you would, because the county also takes a while to reconcile, you would probably just about finish up, maybe a few weeks shy.
Okay.
Well, because they can't get the ballots counted, right? We don't have a final count on several elections now, and I think that's going to be a trend going forward, these late votes. So you're held in suspense for weeks, and I don't think we have like a County of LA sheriff figured out yet. It's close, anyway, so I'd rather do less time than I was sentenced to, than more time. Not doing more time, but many of the politicians I see in school districts and cities added like a year to their term. I don't think that's okay, I'm not doing it.
Thanks, Don. Anyone else? I'd, I'd like to move that we go with the clerk's recommendation of aligning with March 2020.
I'll second that.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I apologize, I just need to read the ordinance title into the record. An ordinance establishing the date of the city's first general for municipal election to the first Tuesday after the first Monday, and in March of even numbered years, beginning in March 2020, 2020, amending Title I of the Elskondo Municipal Code, requesting consolidation with LA County pursuant to Elections Code Section 10403, and repealing ordinance number 1563.
Thank you, David. All right, can we vote on it now?
Absolutely, thank you.
I think we had a second, right? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, five oh. All right, great. So let's go back to city manager.
Mayor, a couple of quick items. Chief Donovan and I had the pleasure of spending an entire day last Friday with a number of city managers and fire chiefs. And one of the concepts that came up, and I don't know if this is going to get any traction with the council, but Redondo Beach creates task forces that report to the city manager, that avoids a lot of these issues. So the city manager then uses that information to report to council on making recommendations, just, just a thought. Labor negotiations, Silent Hero, and I know I've thanked him before, but I'd like to thank him again personally, is Joe Lilio, who served as our unpaid HR director through all of these labor negotiations. David got to bring it home, but Joe was there for six months, serving and wearing both hats, so I want to thank Joe Lilio for that. And finally, wish to thank all, or wish all of our city family, our city employees a happy Thanksgiving. Thank those employees who are going to be working on Thanksgiving, keeping us safe. And council, I wish you and your families a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, same to you and yours. Okay, city attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a quick update. I know that several residents have come to pass meetings with a concern about a certain house on Virginia Street, and I want to let the council know that we have filed a criminal complaint in criminal court. And it's against the property owner, and also the tenant that's living in the garage. And there's an arraignment scheduled for next Monday. The complaint asserts 11 causes of action against the property owner and the, the tenant of the garage. And so we're hoping to get a quick resolution on that issue. And other than that, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, David, appreciate that. How's your boss doing?
He's doing well, yeah, sorry I couldn't be here, but he's doing well.
Good, back surgery?
Uh, different type of surgery, but, surgery.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, it's too personal, anyway. Okay, thank you, all right. City clerk getting reports. Oh, you already did yours. Do you have anything else to add? No, yes?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, happy Thanksgiving, thank you. City treasurer is not here, I don't see Dino either. Okay, Councilmember Pimentel.
I, I will defer talking about all the fires, I think that probably you'll, you'll have a piece for, for the various involvement of our first responders in helping with those. I would like to say I had a very nice visit this week with Michael's Place Special Needs, children who are learning to, to work and live independently. They are interns and employees in the city around us, and continue to represent the city's investment and involvement. I don't mean the city as us, I mean the city as a community, in helping those young people achieve independence. And it is really something to see when you see the way that they operate, and they work their catering, and their coffee, and their delicious scones, which I had about seven of. Further to that, it was nice to see them at the Mattel function, I think we'll touch on, on our citizen of the year awardee there as well. But that was certainly very well put on by the chamber. And also, I think there's an emblematic piece to our nearly 400th Thanksgiving of that represents two group of people whose interests you would think on paper were wildly disparate, being the, the pilgrims and Indians of Massachusetts, but finding common goals and common interests on which to trade, exchange ideas, and sit down for a good meal. And I think there's something in that for all of us, as we sit through these weird election seasons, labor negotiations, and all of those items, so. Happy Thanksgiving for me.
Thank you, Councilman Pimentel. Okay, council member, Nicole?
I always have an idea as to what I'm going to say, and then I listen to Chris, and I get, I'm way off. I just want to make sure everyone knows about the Elskondo Chamber's Holiday Downtown Open House. It's next Thursday night, the 29th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's going to be a lot of downtown businesses with their doors open. Please stop by, shop small, part of what makes our community a community is taking care of our own. So please get out there and do that. The Mattel mixer was a lot of fun, Greg, thank you for the glass of wine, that was quite nice of you. Chris and I had an opportunity to chew on the ear of a couple of our representatives, and try to get some face time with Janice's office and a couple others, so that was nice. And yes, our citizen of the year, Dick Croxell, he's quite an individual. And I think I shared this story with the chief and Chris, that growing up playing baseball in this town, you wanted to get a phone call from Dick Croxell. If you got a phone call from Dick Croxell, it meant everything to you. And I remember it being very, very interesting to have an adult call your home and ask your parents to talk to you. And I remember talking to Dick, and Dick saying, come on and play winter league baseball, and it was just, you know, over the moon, made me happy, so Dick Croxell, very, very deserving citizen of the year to Elskondo.
Great, thank, thank you, Councilmember Nicole. Councilmember Brand?
Shout out to our new Director of Human Resources, only here a few weeks, and we get two big settlements tonight in his first presentations. We've got, getting off to a great start. And thanks to Joe Lilio for setting the table for all of that over the past months. This election that was held earlier- Uh, this election that was held, uh, earlier this month and is coming towards an end, mercifully, uh, we had a lot of, uh, signs around town and they weren't all put in legal places. They went against our ordinance and I hope that in the future we'll enforce that. You saw a lot of propositions and individual candidate signs and parking strips and at parks. And they just weren't right. And so if we're gonna pass a, an ordinance, I think we should enforce it because it's pretty sloppy out there. From driving around, you could see that. Anyway, I'm glad most people picked up their signs after the election was over. Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and see y'all next month.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Mayor Potem, first up.
I just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and, um, enjoy time with your family and friends and have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you very much. I'll make it quick. Uh, was honored to be a guest. My wife and I went to the L A Air Force, um, Association, Shriver Association Ball, was incredible at the Beverly Hilton. Got to sit, um, with one of the generals at the base who runs, he's an assistant for all this S M C. It was incredible, General Thompson was there, Lieutenant Colonel Eagle. It's great to continue to build our relationships with them. They're very excited about everything that we're doing, working with them. Um, all of us included at, at the diocese here. Uh, we had a great event at Mattel. And, um, I went to Teledyne, so I was invited to speak and meet for the first time Dr. Masood, who is retiring after 35 years with Teledyne Controls. They hire 500 people in our town. Big employer, uh, part of a $3 billion publicly traded corporation. This is just one subsidiary. So his boss was here, of course, I was trying to court them from the valley down to good old El Segundo. Uh, no luck there yet, but, um, it was incredible experience and just it really, um, indicated to me that we need to do more outreach, even more outreach with our employers in town here and really get to know them and build those relationships. And, um, I wanna wish someone in the audience a happy 21st birthday. Makes me feel really old. He's here doing some work for a class, I imagine, over there in the corner, Dave Truax, 21 years old. I remember when you were like this big, now he's like 6'7" and still growing. So, uh, happy birthday, Dave. It's fun to run into you at the brewing company with your folks. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Mona, you had something?
Yeah, um, if you do see signs that aren't where they need to be, you can call the clerk's office and we can have them removed.
Great, thank you for adding that. All right, public communications. Mr. Axelrod.
My name is Jack Axelrod. I live at, uh, 317 Richmond Street, uh, here in El Segundo. I've been here, uh, 19 years. I'm misanthropic and I have no sense of hu- well, a limited sense of humor. I thank you for your efforts in behalf of the city. That should be obvious, not necessarily obvious, but anyway, I thank you very much for your obvious concern for the welfare of the city and its inhabitants. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm suggesting that we change the name of the city. I think it's embarrassing to be named after, delivered a city that's named after a, a, an oil refinery. Not a great patriot, not a great, well, I don't like patriotism anyway, but not, not a great human being, not a great theory about humanity. But an oil refinery, that's embarrassing. And you look at this placard that, uh, we have, whatever you'd call it, the design for the emblem of El Segundo and, I don't know, I'd refer to it as ugly, but that, those are my personal tastes. Trash is the function of the population. Any population is gonna produce trash. And we should be, it seems to me that we ought to be relating the size of the population with the trash. And, uh, the trash is inevitable. But don't talk about the trash unless you can talk about reducing the population. We don't need more housing, we need fewer people. Nobody talks about population, anybody who, and where is she? She's gone. Uh, this is not Mayberry. There is no Mayberry. Taxes are not a burden. They're actually a, a, a measure of pride. We, when you, when you, when you finish in, uh, in the, um, in the voting booth, you're given a sticker that, uh, that you put on or you don't put on that says, uh, I voted. Well, seems to me you ought to change that sticker to, I paid my taxes. That's something far more to be proud of than, uh, than having voted. Name of the city, please, David. Yes? I think it would be good to get, to involve the high school students here more than ever. I, I don't ever hear the high school students speak here. I don't, I don't attend every, every meeting, I can't. No, that's not true, I could. I'm lazy, I'm sloppy. I lack, I lack, uh, concentration, I lack concern. But I think it doesn't matter what I do. I think it would be very good to include somehow, I don't know how, I never, I, I thought about it, but like, nothing has come to me, to include the high school students in some way in the, in the, uh, in the, what are we at? Somebody just say something?
No, go ahead, Chuck.
Oh, thank you. Uh, to include, and to include the, the high school students in the city council in some way. And if, even if there's just three or four students who are meeting about a particular, uh, subject and bring them into the city council meeting. I think that'd be, I think that'd be a great idea, but I think, well, it doesn't matter what I think. In Australia, it's my understanding that there is a mandatory vote. I think that'd be a great idea. I like the idea of a mandatory vote. We all said vote. Make it mandatory. Um, I spoke about the high school students. Oh, get rid of that invocation. I don't think there's any proof that God exists. And to have some guy here, some guy from representing some church, come here and order, order God what he should be doing for, for the city, to hell with that. And get rid of the invocation and replace it with maybe the high school, uh, I, um, what do you call a choir? Whatever that, whatever the high school choir would be, let them sing a song and get rid of the invocation. I was in the, uh, city offices not long ago. I wanted to call the former, uh, the former individual who was, took care of, um,
You got 30 seconds left.
30 seconds, all right, who, who took care of the noise abation within the city. So, but I didn't have his phone number. So I went into the city office and I asked for a phone book so I could find out how to call him. There isn't a phone book in the entire city hall. I thought that was odd. Oh, let's get rid of the air force base. It's, uh, very embarrassing to have a, a military institution on, in the city. I thank you, excuse me, I thank you very much for your attention and for your true, what seems to me to be a true regard. Careful, a true regard for the welfare of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Axelrod, happy Thanksgiving. All right, that, Mr. Truax, are you required as part of your school project to speak? I, I think I just heard from your teacher, actually. All right. I don't think there are any more public communications. And we are not going back to closed session. We are adjourning before 9:00 P M even.